Welcome to the 2021 Candidates Forum, sponsored by the Wallingford Community Women in conjunction with Wallingford Government Media. I'm Jean McFarland, the program moderator. This segment features six of the 12 candidates running for Town Council. The format will be as follows. The first part of the program will consist of questions asked of the candidates by two reporters from the Record Journal. They are Lauren Takoras, Wallingford reporter, and Carla Santos, reporter for the Latino Communities Reporting Lab. This will be a round robin type format, where each of the candidates will answer a question. The second part will allow each candidate to make a closing statement. During the question and answer portion of the program, each candidate will have two minutes to respond to the question. After the question and answer period, each candidate will have three minutes to make closing remarks. Before beginning the questioning, I'd like to introduce six of the candidates running for Town Council. They are Autumn Allinson, Republican; Nicole Barrellaro, Democrat; Vinnie Servoni, Republican; Sam Carmody, Democrat; Bruce Conroy, Democrat; Tom Laffin, who is Republican, is unable to attend this evening, and I will read a statement from him at the end. Ms. Takoras, will you please ask your first question of Autumn Allinson?
Yes, thank you. Hi, Autumn.
Hi.
There have been two council budgets in a row that the mayor has vetoed, and the town still seems to have a lot of money left over. Where do you see room for improvement in the budget creation process?
Thank you for your question. I would say, I think the town has been traditionally very conservative in our budget process, and we have tried to create room for a lot of services that the community is asking for. And I think that the council has been overridden, vetoed, in order to be a little more conservative because of the unsure times of COVID. Unfortunately, the last two years have been very uncertain for everybody sitting on Board of Ed. I know that our budget was also very uncertain, because we relied on a lot of grant funding to backfill our overspend. So I do want to say that I think that the mayor was being conservative, rightly so because of his want to kind of see what happens and see if there are going to be things that come up along the way that we'll need to fund. Overall, I do think that the council made the right choice in the last couple of years. I do think that the reserves are on the higher side, but I think that right now, we kind of need the reserves to be there. So I would err on the side of caution myself and say, you know, right now, it's not the time, but I do support the things that the council was trying to support in their veto of the mayor. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Santos, will you please ask a question of Nicole Barrellaro?
Hi, Nicole. Advertising in parks keeps coming up and keeps getting deferred. Are you in favor of putting ads in parks?
Thank you for your question. I think anything we can do as a, I won't say anything, but I think something like advertising, as long as it stays wholesome and not for anything that might endanger a child or anyone else, I am for that revenue-producing idea. I think it's revenue we need. We are in an uncertain time, and the more we can do to be bringing more in, the more we'll be able to improve services, infrastructure, make improvements to the town that we need. That's all I got for you, sorry.
Okay. Lauren, would you please ask your question of Vinnie Servoni?
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Lauren.
In your campaign ad in Wallingford Magazine, you mentioned that your vision for the future includes implementing strategies from the Plan of Conservation and Development, which passed in 2015. Can you talk about initiatives or agenda items you've sponsored that have helped Wallingford adopt this plan?
That's a really good question. Thank you. You know, as the chairman, you are given the privilege and the task of setting the agenda for the council. I've participated in agendas that have included land purchases to preserve open space for the council. We recently purchased the 3M building on Barnes Road for the future expansion of the Wallingford Police Department. We are always looking for opportunities to preserve open space for us. I did participate in the program for the transit-oriented district near the train station. There are tax incentives to encourage development downtown of various types of transportation-oriented development, the commercial buildings with commercial units on the first floor and residential units on the floors above. And I do believe that that has proven to be helpful for the development of the area near the train station. The apartment complex just north of the station is thriving, its name escapes me right now. I'm hearing that there is other development that may happen closer to, just south of the old train station. So I do believe that we are looking at responses to the Plan of Conservation and Development that are going to lead to beneficial development in town. Thank you.
Carla, would you please ask a question of Sam Carmody?
Hello.
Hi.
Where would you cut the budget?
I am, you know, I am in support of the council's most recent budget, $177 million budget that they overridden the mayor to keep taxes low and keep a mill rate of 28.52. I would be in favor of looking in any cost-saving measures that could reduce the budget and maintain a low tax rate that's competitive compared to our surrounding towns. I would be in favor of pursuing attrition through retirements of town employees and investing in technologies that would make our town more efficient and effective, and in the long term, reduce costs to our town. But I am open-minded to any ideas that the public or department heads in our community would have that would reduce spending in our budget and keep our mill rate at 28.52 or lower. Thank you.
Lauren, would you please ask a question of Bruce Conroy?
Sure. Hi. In response to a shortfall in the fire department replacement pay account over the last several years, fire and emergency services were reduced, and outside training was cut in order to direct the funding into the replacement account. Combined with a decline in volunteerism and in people entering into the career side of fire service, how can we keep the fire department sufficiently staffed?
That's a great question. And actually, that problem goes across every industry where someone has to work with their hands. So, the thing is that, let's start right off. I know there are many kids who want to be firemen. We can have a pre-apprenticeship program for firefighters and emergency services that starts in our schools. I'm running for council, not for Board of Ed, just a suggestion. But it's an excellent idea. I teach an apprenticeship program for the Carpenters Union, and I know for a fact it is successful. So, we get them in on the ground floor, and then we have firemen. And those are dedicated. They spent four years or six years learning to be one. So, let's start when they're young. That's all.
Thank you. Carla, would you please ask the next question of Autumn Allinson?
Hello. How do you plan on creating better relationships with the growing Latino population so that they feel that they also belong to the town?
Thank you for your question. I have a huge appreciation for all of the work that SCOW does currently to try to help people find their place in town. One thing, as a Board of Ed member, I can appreciate that we probably need some more placement, like staff placement, in our schools representing the community, but not only because of, not only from a Board of Ed perspective, but because we have parents in the town who are not really understanding maybe necessarily what their kids are learning. And I think it would be a great thing to have more bilingual staff to accommodate those areas, but also to kind of coach parents through the process. And as their kids grow into the community of Wallingford and eventually stay in the community of Wallingford, they will grow into that experience of Wallingford facilitating their family growing as well. I think that making Wallingford a welcoming place for all races, nationalities, ethnicities, whatever, all of the things, really make, it shows people from a young age, but also people who have come into town recently, that we are looking to partner in the community. And I do think that those perspectives really do start from a young age. And how we treat parents ultimately is going to resonate with children for a very long time. So, thank you very much for your question.
Lauren, would you please ask your next question of Nicole Barrellaro?
Sure. Hi. What type of systemic impact on Wallingford would you like to see from the once-in-a-lifetime ARPA funds? What are some low-hanging fruits that are opportunities to address?
Very good question, thank you. I mean, there are things that need fixing, there are businesses that have had issues. I know that there's a lot of talk about who's going to be making this decision as to. I think it would be important to invest in our education system. I know Meriden is investing in outdoor classrooms, about $2 million. It's a permanent investment, something the town will continue to utilize after, hopefully, if we can ever say after COVID is ever over. And it's an investment in our future for our kids. Aside from that, I do think, I think the Town Council should have a say in how those funds are spent. And they were elected by the taxpayers, it's taxpayer money, and I do believe that the Town Council should have a say in how these are spent, and to make sure that they're done fairly and impartially. Thank you.
Carla, would you please ask your next question of Vinnie Servoni?
The police department has many open officer positions. Other towns budget $1 a month per FTE to avoid overfunding. Is that something Wallingford should consider come budget time?
My mic is usually always on, I'm sorry. First of all, nice to meet you, Carla. Thank you. That is an issue that we talk about every year around budget time. And I think that the challenge with the way our charter is written, if the budget is set that way in order for a new officer to be hired for one of those $1 positions, then the mayor has to come to the council and ask for the council to amend the budget to allow for that position to be funded. I think that there might be a hybrid way of doing that, but, you know, if you have seven open officer positions, and you have to have a meeting every time you want to fund the dollar position to be fully funded for whatever the salary and benefits might be, I think that's a cumbersome process. So I see a benefit to having the salary, the position for the salary in the budget. I just might reduce some of those that we don't see immediately on the horizon. There's a problem filling those positions as a result of the fact that you need to reserve a position, a space in the police academy before the officer can be hired. So, we do need help with the state creating more openings in the police academy so that we can get officers in to fill those positions. Thank you.
Lauren, would you please ask a question of Sam Carmody?
Sure. Hi. On March 3, 2020, the Council Ordinance Committee met to discuss ways to address suspected human trafficking at some businesses in town offering massage. None of the three Democratic council members attended that meeting. What would the Democratic response have been had you been on the council?
If I were on the council, I would have been there that evening to discuss this important issue that's facing our community and communities throughout the state and throughout the country. There should be no tolerance for human trafficking whatsoever, and we should take an aggressive stance to put that to an end and send our police and investigate businesses that are being reported or accused of human trafficking. We should have passed an ordinance at this point by now to ensure that the safety of women and young men are upheld in this community, and that there is no place for human trafficking here in Wallingford.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carla, would you please ask a question of Bruce Conroy?
Last month, the Planning and Zoning Commission rejected a plan to build an Amazon facility on the former BMS property. In your opinion, what's the best use for the BMS site?
You know, honesty, Amazon facility. So, should the traffic be a problem at the facility, we can most likely apply for grants like they did for, say, Bass Pro Shop or Cabela's when they were built to fix the intersection or improve traffic flow. So, they applied. I feel that we should have approved it, but that's planning and zoning's prerogative not to. Every business that comes in needs to be reviewed. The neighbors get to say yes, no, whether they like it or not. But the fact is, Amazon already is in Wallingford, and they are a good tenant, they pay their taxes, they take care of what we ask them to. So, what goes there next? Maybe nothing for a long time. Maybe it pays no taxes for a long time. So, Amazon was the right choice, in my opinion.
Lauren, would you please ask the next question of Autumn Allinson?
All right. Climate change is a reality that we are experiencing. Although many policies are set at the state and national level, what initiatives would you implement at the local level to help the Wallingford community adapt to a changing climate and use town resources sustainably?
Thank you. So, I think, first off, I walk around town kind of a lot, and I don't usually see bike racks. So, I think that that would be a great, like, small thing we could do. Also, the opportunity to possibly partner with businesses that rent bicycles to ride around town might also be a kind of cool thing, also encouraging people to come in. And if they don't want to walk down Center Street and back up it again, they can possibly bike up it, it's a little easier on the legs. Secondly, I would say that I am all for car charging stations being around town. I'm not exactly sure how I would expand that into the budget, so I can't tell you how, but I think that having some car charging stations in the areas of town that we love to debate, parking lots, would probably be a really helpful solution to both business owners and folks around town who drive electric cars, or people coming from North Haven who are maybe at the end of their hybrid charge. I think that that could be a really helpful thing. I also think that doing more events around why we can serve in town, so having more hosted events with people, with the Conservation Commission, might be helpful to understand why is there so much turmoil between different groups who want to use parks in different ways? And whether it's for conservation, or for biking, or whatever else they're trying to use them for, why? What is causing the divide? And then come to a reasonable agreement on those things. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Carla, would you please ask your next question of Nicole Barrellaro?
So, when it comes to the community pool, as it was bid two years ago, now it would be more expensive due to inflation and COVID disruption. What plan do you see yourself supporting?
I fully support investing in our community pool. I think it's an invaluable resource that could, that not only provides something for our families and kids, elderly, all ages can use this. I mean, it's a valuable resource. There are houses around that area that are not zoned for pools. It's necessary. I would absolutely vote for it. I think we can bond to pay for it if that's the case, if we're not willing to use other funds. I think it's invaluable. I can't say much more about it. That's it. Thank you.
Lauren, would you please ask the next question of Vinnie Servoni?
The State Social Equity Council approved a list of communities prioritized for marijuana sales licenses and special equity programs with the goal of helping communities disproportionately harmed by the war on drugs by giving those residents equitable access to a marketplace that could generate tens of millions in annual revenue. Meriden took the opportunity to make a 3% tax on cannabis sales and growth, and Wallingford turned that funding down, banning all cannabis sales. Do you feel that Wallingford was being short-sighted?
So, that's a controversial issue. You know, it's something that doesn't cross state borders well. It's something that you can't pay for easily because federally chartered banks can't handle it. It presents all kinds of challenges, and the state gave each community, each municipality, the opportunity to address it individually. And I think in Wallingford, we happen to be painfully aware of the consequences of drug use, and you can tell me that marijuana isn't a drug that should be feared, but, you know, there's science that says otherwise. I wish the FDA would take a position on it. But that being said, I think that the Planning and Zoning Commission has to represent the values of its community. And I think that the decision that they made is reflective of the majority of the community spirit in Wallingford. I think that's probably one of the wisest thing that came out of the Marijuana Bill. You know, there's problems with the concept of equity, and there's, I think the whole thing, you know, left the legislature before the horse was fully grown. You know, you've licensed the sale of marijuana, but you haven't come up with regulations that allow dispensaries to open. So, you know, in summary, to answer your question, and thank you for the challenging question, I think that RP&amp;Z had to make a decision that reflected our community values. Thank you.
Carla, would you please ask the next question of Sam Carmody?
The proposed data centers have raised concerns from neighbors about noise and vibration. Last time the town had a similar issue with business and noise at Thurston Foods, the town changed the law. What do you see as the solution to accommodate the data centers and appease the neighbors?
This is a critical issue for the future of our town. Wallingford is uniquely placed in the state and in the country between New York and Boston, and we obviously have some of the best electric rates, not only in the state but in the country. And so that makes it an attractive place for these data centers to locate. And I think it would be a mistake if we passed up this opportunity and didn't welcome them into our community. But we need to be cognizant of the neighbors' concerns about noise and about traffic and about possible health risks. But I know that the town and Planning and Zoning Commission are hearing those concerns now and addressing them, and hoping to place these data centers in areas away from the residential neighborhoods to make sure that the noise and the traffic and whatever else doesn't interfere with their daily lives. But I do think the data centers are vital to the future of our town for the payment in lieu of taxes that our town will receive if they move and build here. Thank you.
Lauren, would you please ask the last question of Bruce Conroy?
All right. Let's assume the data centers are successfully built, everyone's happy with the noise issue. What do you want to do with the extra revenue, considering that we're in a good spot with the police station, open space, school roofs?
So, assuming we built the police station, we renovated it to new, so that's a lot of money coming in, and you didn't mention the pool. Because considering it doesn't look like it's going to happen anytime soon until we change administrations, or a miracle, I'm going to say that that's the big one right there. Listen, my parents came here in the '70s because Wallingford would shine from New Haven, and trust me, New Haven would not shine. And if we have this opportunity and we miss it, we can fund better programs for the boys and girls clubs, we can help the Y with their pool, we can help all of, we can help SCOW, we can help every one of our private organizations, make sure that Wallingford is the place that my parents moved to. So, that's a lot of money that we should definitely not turn away. But however, if they violate the noise ordinance, there they go. But that's what I have to say, spend the money back into the town, keep the taxes down. I like Wallingford. I like Wallingford.
Thank you. That concludes the question and answer portion of the program. Each candidate will now have three minutes to make a closing statement. Ms. Allenson, would you please start?
Thank you very much. Thank you to the Wallingford community women for hosting this event and Ms. McFarland for always being our gracious, our gracious host here. It takes a lot of courage to get involved in town business. I rose to the challenge a couple of years ago and was elected to the Board of Ed. I've done so with honor and fidelity. I have made sure that I have listened to parents, I have responded where I felt appropriate. I have been very disciplined in my dedication to our students. Going forward into Town Council, I would love to provide some new views in addition to preserving the older ones. I would love to work with whoever else is elected in partnership, because we are a team, to get done the things that the community is asking for. I am pro-pool. I am pro-animals. I don't know who isn't. I am, you know, I love people. I love to talk, I love to talk to people about their experiences and I love to hear people's experiences in Wallingford, be they good or bad, because it's important to us to know where we need to change. You don't know what you don't know. And the people are where you get all of those answers from. Wallingford has persevered through some really difficult times, through COVID, through, you know, historically, a couple of recessions, all kinds of crazy things could have happened. And it is still an amazing place with amazing social programs, amazing departments. We have a park and rec department, which does a tremendous amount for families. We have so many things that are already going on that we need to preserve. And there's no reason why we can't do a few more. So, I really would love to be on Wallingford Town Council because I love this community. I have lived here for about a decade now and I can't think of any place else that I would want to be. So, that being said, this is Autumn. Vote Allenson.
Thank you. Ms. Barilaro, would you please give your statement?
Autumn said it best. It is, it takes a lot of courage to do this. I started, I was born and raised here. I started out here. I went to Lyman Hall. I went to Quinipiac after that. I ended up leaving a month after graduating from Quinipiac, went to New York, lived in Manhattan, worked at an executive search, and went to law school there. I came back. I like it here. It's a fun place. I love our downtown area. I love the community aspect and I want to grow that aspect. That's my dream. I feel that everyone up here has the same goal. We have way more in common than we do differences. We all want to make this town a better, the best place it can be. It is a great place, but the best place it can be. And we want to make sure everyone feels safe, happy, able to make a living and raise their families and maybe have a little bit of fun along the way. When I came back, I started working for a law firm in Hampden. I have a lot of experience in real estate law as well as probate and trusts. I've been a member of the Board of Women and Family Center in Meriden, Connecticut, and also their treasurer. I'm usually on the other side of this forum, making hand signals at my candidate because I've run several campaigns. And it is definitely different being on this side. But I got to tell you, I'm so happy I made this decision, knocking on doors, talking to people in the community. I feel closer than ever to my neighbors and I'm just happy to be here. I can assure you, if elected, I will work with both sides. I don't think party lines matter in this town. I think we all want the same things. And if we put it all aside, we can actually get some really good things done. Thank you.
Mr. Servoni, would you please make your statement?
Well, thank you, Ms. McFarland. Thank you to Wallingford community women, to Wallingford Government TV. And Lauren and Carla, nice to meet you. Thank you for your questions and participating and making this event happen. So, this latest term in the council, certainly no less exciting than my prior five and very different in so many ways. Two months into this term, the world shut down and we were at a loss for how to get beyond that. So, I worked to get the council into virtual meetings, the meetings we commonly refer to as Zoom meetings. We sat through many late-night Zoom meetings. I have learned that if you are in your sweatpants and sitting in your living room, that you are not in a hurry to end a meeting. And that's not a complaint, that's an observation, because that's the job. Being on this council means spending late nights listening to people tell you how they feel about the issues. There's a lot of other things that make being on the council less than perfectly desirable, the strange hours, special meetings, tough decisions, big money decisions, and decisions with long-term impacts beyond our lifetimes. That's something you need to keep in mind. We've made a lot of good decisions that impact our immediate future, our decision to move the Wallingford PD, the Police Department, from the Old State Armory to Barnes Road. It might not have been an easy decision, but if you had the opportunity to look through the Old State Armory in its present condition, you'd realize that it's grossly inadequate for what the Police Department's needs are today, especially in light of how diverse it's become. And as a member of our Police Station Steering Committee, I'm excited to say that this committee is planning a police department that will take into account our future needs, certainly well beyond our lifetime. People criticize Wallingford and its current government for lagging behind in technology, for a lack of planning and that sort of thing. And if you've been watching this term, you have to agree that we ran council meetings as virtual meetings. We made plans for a new police department. We talked about downtown development. We've paved the way for data centers. This has been a council that has been planning for a future and a future that's good for Wallingford way beyond our lifetimes. I think that's important. I'm happy to have been a part of it. And I thank you for your past support and I look forward to your vote on November 2nd. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Carmody, would you please make your statement?
Thank you. Let me start by thanking the Wallingford community women for hosting us here tonight, as well as all of those who were involved in putting tonight together, Wallingford Government Television, Lauren and Carla from the Record Journal, thank you for your questions this evening. Wallingford is a place of great importance to me. It is more than just my hometown. It is part of the fabric of my life and who I am. And I am very proud to have been actively involved in our community for most of the 35 years of my life. And I hope to become even more engaged in the town that we all love as a council person. I will work hard each and every day to ensure that Wallingford grows stronger and progresses in every aspect through fiscal responsibility, economic development, advancement in our education system, government transparency, investment in our downtown, and environmental stewardship. I want to make sure Wallingford is a place where people want to live, work, raise families, and retire. And so, there's no doubt that there will be many important and difficult decisions that our town will be facing in the coming years. And if elected, I promise that I will carefully consider each and every proposal that comes before the council, weighing the benefits to the town and the tax implications. And I will always listen to everyone's opinions and concerns with an open mind. So, I would be honored to serve on this council here in my hometown, the town that I love so much. And I hope I can earn your vote on November 2nd. And I ask that you support me and my colleagues on Row A on Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conroy, would you please make your statement?
I'd like to thank everybody as well. I think you've all heard plenty of thanks. Thank you and thank all of you who put this together and everybody out there who's watching or sitting there listening to me. Going last is tough, but I'm going to do it anyway because I like talking. So, listen, for me, there's no vision for Wallingford. There's a goal of where it has to go. And where it has to go is forward. We need better schools, fully funding them. We need a fully funded and staffed Police Department and Emergency Services. And you heard my ideas about apprenticeship programs and the lack of, the mayor said himself, the lack of people in Public Works made paving projects not possible. Easy, that's an easy, easy thing to solve. There are building trade unions that make their home here. And those people, those people do that exact job. Need more people? Hire some, only temporary, and then you can send them home. There's many cost-saving measures that can be handled just like that. Hire some temporary labor, skilled, qualified labor. And our building projects coming up, that is exactly what I do, from small to big, from small grocery stores to universities. I'm a project superintendent and I started off working with these two hands more than 30 years ago and worked my way forward to where I am today. Building projects, bidding, working with project labor agreements, and large construction projects is what I do. So, sitting on this side of that table is what Wallingford needs, someone who understands that entire building process. We need someone like me who knows the process, knows how to negotiate, and knows the loopholes and knows the good and the bad players. As for all the rest, the data centers, you got to ask me. I told you, I think they're a good idea. Amazon's a good idea. Anything that moves this town forward and makes it more financially stable, in reality, is what we need. More businesses come here, they pay taxes. Residents, including especially our retired residents, pay less. And that's what we have to look for, residents pay less. So, listen, I'm not knocking, I'm not going to knock anybody else on the council who wants to be on the council. I'm going to tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to do everything I can to make Wallingford that shining example that my parents moved to. My parents came here to escape the projects in New Haven. And they did and gave us the opportunity. Me and my siblings all did well because of Wallingford, and I want to keep it that way. Right now, the shine's not there. Let's polish it up a little bit. Vote Conroy for council.
Thank you. I will now read the statement from Tom Laffin. First, I want to thank the Wallingford community women and the government media crew for organizing and broadcasting these candidate forums as they do every election and continuing the vital and necessary contribution of communicating the thoughts and ideas of our candidates to the people. I'm sorry that I am unable to attend in person this year. Tonight, I am participating in one of the final classes for the class of 2021 FBI Citizens Academy. It is an outreach program and liaison program run by the Community Relations Office of the State Division of the FBI. Identified and nominated by a member of the Bureau, I hope to not just represent the Wallingford community, but to bring the connections, communications, and resources of the FBI to our community over the next few years in measurably enhanced ways. By bringing the FBI together with various players in our community, we can continue to improve our own safety of life and property with a better understanding of the actions and resources available to us, whether it be the obvious connections in law enforcement with our Police Department, with the Coalition for a Better Wallingford on dealing with the opioid crisis, or with the Spanish Community of Wallingford's multicultural engagement initiatives. We can come together with community operations already in the works, run through the likes of amazing programs from our public library or other nonprofit organizations such as The Rotary, which raises money in town to be spent on local initiatives, including the Connecticut STEM Academy and Master's Manor. I know the main purpose of these forums is to help the voters know and understand where their public servants stand or plan on going. Regarding the issues we face as a community, and again, I'm sorry I could not participate in this year, I have, after 10 years of service on the Town Council, four years on the Board of Ed, belonging to PTOs, Scout Pack, and other teams, where I have met you, that everyone knows not just where I stand or where I hope for all of us to go, but that I do my best to make difference and I cannot sit by an issue or concern without standing up to do something about it. I know you can get a further reminder of who I am in any of the previous candidate forums or candidate meetings that are on YouTube. But just in case that is not enough, and please, I don't want you to have to rely on some read list of my accomplishments or flattering cherry-picking ideas, I will be working to answer all of the questions asked of my fellow candidates in short video clips available through my website and my Facebook and TikTok accounts over the next few days that follow this recording. Search Facebook or Google "Tom Laffin" and you will find them. I just ask for your patience in the preparation of these videos and more, as I, like you, juggle soccer games, cross-country races, scout meetings, a job, and whatever else is thrown at all of us in this crazy life. Look, I hope if nothing else, we can recognize the need and importance of coming together to keep Wallingford the strong, responsible, consistent, and vibrant community it has been, is, and will be in the future. While we still and always will have work to do, we will get to where we both want and need to go by respecting and leading each other, together with egos put aside, respectful exchanges of dialogue, and a continued share, love of Wallingford. Thank you, Tom Laffin. Thank you. This concludes Part 1 of the 2021 Town Council Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford community women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 2nd.